Good evening, everyone. It is August 10th, 2017, and I will call to order the special meeting for the Board of Selectmen, Town of Wolfboro. Tonight, we have a public hearing. It's on the proposed expansion of the town docks. Matthew Solvin will start speaking in a moment. He's our town planner. He'll give an overview, and then we will quickly move to Jim Reins from White Mountain Survey to give us a better idea of how the project looks.
Thank you very much. I just wanted to quickly run through the agenda. Technically, we hope to get out of here in an hour and 15 minutes. We'll start with an introduction, as Luke said. I'll provide this little brief background and progress report. Jim will provide an overview from White Mountain Survey. We'll open the public hearing around 7:15, and hopefully go for an hour, as long as we have enough time, to collect all the public input. Yeah, I think, can you turn it up a little bit? Thank you. There we go. I just wanted to start by recognizing the members of the ad hoc Town Docks Committee. This group started meeting at the end of 2016 and was established around that date. Dave Senical, who's the chairman, is a member of the Board of Selectmen. Also, Linda Murray, a member of the board. John Thurston, Paul O'Brien, Steve Durigan, Bob Tougher, Dave Owen, the town manager, who couldn't be here this evening, Adam Tasker from the Public Works Department, Justin from the Recreation Department, and myself from the Planning and Development Department, all critical in getting this proposed plan together for your review this evening. When this discussion began back in the end of 2016, and I think this has been ruminated over for several years, in fact, there were a couple ideas in mind and a couple purpose statements, I think, that were being considered. Obviously, one of the key things here is to provide additional boat slip capacity and to adopt, to adapt the docks as well to accommodate larger boat sizes. Obviously, when the docks were first designed, the boats were significantly smaller. Now, we're seeing average boat sizes of 20, 25 to 30 feet. So, there's obviously, the docks are the same size, but the amount of slips available has changed over time. So, we wanted to adapt these to account for that. There are some issues with boater safety and some potential issues with access. Obviously, if you've been there on a weekend day or even during lunch hours, you'll see that there are some issues with boats circling around, looking for spaces that are available on the docks with that limited capacity. And we view this potential expansion as an opportunity to address that as well. One of the bigger things, I think, and one thing that's really important for me personally in the planning role, is that this is an opportunity to strengthen the economy by really bringing in more visitor trips into the downtown and bringing more folks into the downtown area to spend money here in the local economy. So, I think that's a critical part of this project as well that the group was considering. And then finally, in the interest of the sort of Public Works and Asset Management side of things, this is a critical opportunity to offer maintenance and improvements to an existing municipal asset that's important to maintain over a long-term period of time, and obviously, one of the biggest assets for this community in the downtown area. So, those are really five of the biggest things that the committee was considering when it went to propose this plan. Since the end of 2016, several things have taken place. Obviously, the ad hoc committee was formed. There have been five committee meetings in total of the group. We start by developing, we started by developing a proposed dock layout plan, working with Jim Reins of White Mountain Survey. We had some meetings with NHDES staff, Franny Palatier and Darlene Force principally. We had an onsite meeting down at the town docks and also a meeting in Concord to discuss some of the permitting components of this. We also had some consultation meetings with the Mount Washington, the Winnie Bell, and a direct waterfront abutter that was critical to the project as well. We felt those were really important before we actually finalized a plan to ensure that our closest stakeholders were informed of what we were thinking and that their input was respected in the plan. And then finally, where we're at today is obviously a revision of the proposed dock layout plan was created and prepared for this review tonight for you all. So, that's sort of where we've gone over the last six months or so. I did want to make a quick note before we jump over to Mr. Reins's presentation, and that is that you may know that we are scheduled for a boat ramp extension, expansion and reconfiguration this year. That's an independent project from what we're talking about tonight. Obviously, the efforts are related in a way, but that project is still scheduled for the fall of 2017 for construction. And this is just a brief visual of it with the slight kick-out at the dock, at the ramp entrance and obviously, the reconstruction of the ramp as well. That's an independent project from what we're talking about tonight, but obviously, related in some way. And with that, I'm going to pass it off to Jim Reins for a presentation of the proposed dock plan, and he's also going to touch on the no-wake zone configuration as well, I think. Jim, you just want to turn that on, too.
Guess that's working now. Good evening. So, the first plan that we have up here is kind of difficult to see, but it's an aerial photograph, and it shows the proposed dock expansion. These are the existing docks here. This is the boat ramp modification that Matt was just speaking of. And then there, these are the dock extensions. Now presently, there's a, there's an existing buoy, no-wake zone buoy here and one here. They are 150 feet from the existing docks. And what this plan shows is that the new 150-foot wake zone would be in this area. That's a lot better. So, now you can see the existing buoys in this aerial photograph. And so, it would move out here. So, what this does is just gives you a sense of how much further out it would be, sort of in a grand scheme overview. Let's see, we can go to the next, a couple of other things as part of this expansion. When we met with the Mount Washington, it was decided that this boat, this cluster piling would move out here about 50 feet. And then the Winnie Bell, when it comes in, depending on the wind, this would actually be widened out here about 20 feet and then taper down so that the Mount Washington would come in and would be now in this orientation instead of this orientation. And this would give a ace, another way for the Winnie Bell to offload perhaps more conveniently. So, this is a more close-up version of just the dock expansion. Unfortunately, not quite as legible. I may try to go into a little bit closer one. So, as I said, this, this part of the dock here would be about 20 feet. From this cluster piling would move over approximately 50 feet, and this bow cluster would get a little bit bigger to allow them to pivot more. This dock, there would be about an 80-foot addition. This dock, a 70-foot, and then these three would be 60 feet. So, the total dock length would become 200 feet for these four and 170 for this one. There would be no change proposed here because the easterly abutter here, this is a projection of their boundary line, and the Wetlands Bureau does not permit you to go over it. You can come up to it with the consent of the abutter, but you're not allowed to cross it. So, the, the number of slips that would be added if you, by the NHDES definition of a boat slip, which on Lake Winnipesaukee is a quantity of water 25 feet long, eight feet wide and three feet deep, these would add approximately 24 additional slips excluding anything to do with the Winnie Dock. The depths, interestingly, we were somewhat concerned, wondering if we went out another 60 feet, is, are the depths going to change dramatically? And they really don't. There's, you know, the water depths range from about 13 feet in this area over to about 19 feet deep here, and they're about 16 to 18 feet deep presently at the, at the ends of the current dock. There would be no changes to the mailboat and rescue dock slip. That would remain the same. The other part, or the other discussion that occurred with DES, anytime you have more than five slips, it's a major project which requires a public hearing. Typically, that public hearing is, takes place in Concord. So, another purpose of tonight's meeting was to have a public input or have a public hearing here to solicit input from the public. And depending on the comments here, DES may consider waiving the public hearing in Concord and accepting a videotaped portion of this, or a videotaped meeting tonight in place of that, which will help move the permitting process along. The permitting process is 75 days from the date of a completed application. Once they take action on it, if they request additional information, you have 30, or you have 60 days to provide additional information, and then the state has 30 more days to review that information. Once they approve it, then there is a 30-day appeal period, and major applications have to be approved by the governor and council. And so, they will not even see it until after that 30-day period has passed. Once the 30-day appeal period has passed, the Wetlands Bureau will then put a package together and send it to the governor and council for their review, depending on where that falls in the agenda cycle of the governor and council. That could be anywhere from four weeks later to six weeks later. So, you know, it would probably be a six-month permitting process would be a realistic timeframe. Given the fact that this is a public benefit, the Wetlands Bureau may act on it more quickly, but that is the statutory process, if you will, that this goes through. The only other aspect of the project which came up during the conversation was the potential, and I'm going to back up one slide here to see, you'll note some spot grades out here. There's a bit of a mound in this area that's a combination of sediment deposits from the Smith River as well as the prop wash from the Mount Washington backing up. And with this shift over for the Mount Washington going from here to here, they would like to see that that gets dredged out a little bit. And DES would prefer that this, regardless of the participation in how the costs go with that, that they would like to see that all come in in a single application. And that concludes my presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions that anyone has.
Okay, I'll open the public hearing. Those are the members of the public that I wish to please approach the microphone and state your name for the record.
Hello, Mary DeVries, and I hate to fool with this because then it's...
Hold on.
Okay. All right, tell me when you can hear me. Is that better? Anybody? Thank you so much, Jim. Oh, I can hear it now. Must be better. Mary DeVries, and I'm the Executive Director of the Wolfboro Area Chamber of Commerce. And I have been asked to speak with you this evening on behalf of our Board of Directors, who has asked me to say that they are very much in favor of the proposed expansion of Wolfboro Town Docks. The expansion of the docks will improve how Wolfboro welcomes its boating enthusiasts, and expanding the docks will accommodate the growing demand for more visitors choosing to arrive by boat. This will complement the marketing efforts of the collective community, including the town itself, that are put in place for the health of the year-round local economy. Importantly, as noted, the proposed expansion will continue to support the use of Wolfboro's port by excursion boats such as the MS Mount Washington, Millie B., Mailboat, the Winnipesaukee Bell, and, and our rescue services, excuse me. If dock space is not readily available in Wolfboro, purchases for goods, services, and meals will be made in other towns. The expansion of the town docks, very much like the improvements already being made to the boat launch that were pointed out this evening, is in keeping with the town's intention to properly maintain its assets. On behalf of the Board of Directors again, I say please move forward with the proposed expansion of the Wolfboro Town Docks. And Mr. Chairman, I have a copy of that. Would you like that?
I can pass it now. Okay, thank you. Anyone else from the audience?
My name's John Rourke, and my office is located pretty much at the town docks, above Dockside and beside Joe Green's. And I am able to, during the course of the year, watch a lot of the goings-on at the dock. And a couple of issues I thought that'd be appropriate to raise here, one of which is that if there's any type of wind that's blowing towards the Avery Building there, too, I watch people nearly daily on those individual days that has got some wind bouncing off other boats trying to back up, you know, now at the present distance, adding 60 feet onto the dock. I just, I can't imagine the increased difficulty that that's going to make. Secondly, I know of many individuals, I'm sure there's probably people in this room that do as well, that pull their boats up to the town dock and literally leave them parked there all day. I know of individuals that park their boat there and commute to work onto an island, and they're taking up a boat slip for eight to 10 hours during the course of every single day during the summer that's not a weekend day. So, I think that needed to be addressed as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can you hear me? My name is Barbara Bridges, and I own Bridges Hallmark Shop, which is right in the downtown area. And I think the expansion of the docks would be wonderful for the businesses downtown. It would give us all a boost that, you know, we could use and in turn benefit the town. And as Mary said, that, you know, we, boats that have to bounce around out there and can't get in, and if they did that once or twice, they probably wouldn't do it a third time. So, we need to have the space available to those that want to come and enjoy our beautiful town. So, I would encourage you to go forward with this expansion. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Kathy Eaton. My husband and I own the Wolfboro Trolley Company, and also, I am Chairman of the Wolfboro Economic Development Committee. First off, from a business standpoint, sitting on the trolley, waiting for my passengers to get on and off, I watch the docks fill up and watch the people wait and the people hoping to get in. And we have to support, both from a business point of view and as a town resident, providing more access to people coming into Wolfboro by boat is only a win-win situation for everybody in town. Mary said it better than, as well as it can be said, I guess. I only can add that one thing is true, that if they come by boat, they're not coming by car. And we have enough cars in downtown as well, so, but this is something we can do something about. So, this expansion is, is very important. I would point out that when the EDC did their retention and expansion survey and surveyed 100 businesses in town back in 2014 and 2015, one of the suggestions made at that time was that if we could increase the space at the Wolfboro Town Docks, that that would be good for the town's economy in the opinion of several businesses in town. The Economic Development Committee absolutely agrees with that and unanimously voted to support this project at its, at its June meeting. So, I bring that to you as a message from them and strongly encourage you to go through with this. Thank you for taking it on and addressing it. It is responding to what the business community has said and what is an obvious need in town. So, that's doing something about it. Congratulations on that to you and the committee, and let's keep it moving forward. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Wally Keniston, citizen of Wolfboro. Where you're extending those docks so far, has anybody thought about lighting some of them out that far? Because when you come in at nine o'clock at night, it's going to be completely, completely dark until you get to the fire pole. So, that's something you should think about.
I think that's an excellent comment, yeah.
Okay.
Yep.
Bruce Tarkelson, 20-year, year-round resident of Wolfboro. I've been using those town docks for the past 20 years, very much liked them, and I am strongly in favor of this proposal. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Suzanne Ryan, resident. I may have missed something, but is the state funding this?
No.
It's a wonderful idea. I'm in favor of it. I have a boat, and I know how hard it is to find a space. But do you have an estimated cost?
We are currently, we're working through the numbers. We don't have an actual number specifically yet, but it would be looking in the range of $250,000 to $400,000 potentially.
And are we going to be doing any, out of that money, any repairs to the existing docks? I mean, once you stop?
There are some, there are some thoughts and plans to resurface the existing docks at the exact same time.
And is included in that cost?
No, well, the existing, the existing dock repair and maintenance is estimated to be about $30,000 based on preliminary estimates, preliminary estimates, and that's not included in the cost that we're talking about, or Luke mentioned. It's a separate cost.
Another question is, are we exposing ourselves to more liability with the extension of these docks? Have you, have you, when there's an accident at a dock, a town facility, does, because it's on state water, does the state play a role in the liability or does the town assume the liability?
Excellent question. Chief, do you have any?
So, I think the answer to that question is no. Bottom line, well, let me introduce myself. I'm Chief Dean Rondo, Chief of Police at Wolfboro PD. So, when, when there's a crash on a town road or a state road, the town isn't held accountable because there's an automobile crash or what have you. If there's a crash between two boats on Lake Winnipesaukee, it's, it's really, you know, on the boaters themselves. If a boater has crashed into the docks, which has happened before, and there's been injuries over the past, the town is not liable. Now, where I think that would change, if there was some overwhelming amount of negligence or disrepair that the town was aware of and the town was made aware of, and the town chose to do nothing. If there's a particular danger that was pointed out and the town chose not to mitigate that danger, and then somebody lost a life or what have you, then I think the scales tip the other way. But for what we're doing right now, there, there is really nothing to worry about. Just do a good project. Any further questions? Suzanne? Okay. While, while I'm up here, I do want to address something that Mr. Rourke brought up. And, and this was a criticism I heard about a week ago or so. And I did address the town manager earlier in the year, and then this came up last, I think, October or November with the Budget Committee, and they had asked if we could do the enforcement down there at the town docks. And, and the whole four-hour boat docking thing came up. And so, the bottom line is this, I've been here 21 years, you know, interrupted only by war, right? Been in war a few times in here. We write precious few of those four-hour docking violations because they simply aren't happening. And if they are happening, we don't see them. And when you really look at this, from a holistic perspective, if, if you're lucky enough to have a boat on Lake Winnipesaukee and you come up to enjoy your boat, you're not coming to Wolfboro for more than four hours to shop. You're just not doing it, okay? You're coming to get something to eat, maybe fuel, maybe visit the dive store, maybe go get an ice cream, maybe hit some of the downtown stores, and then you're back out on the water enjoying the afternoon or the day with your family, or going to a sandbar, water skiing, or tubing, or whatever you're going to do, or scuba diving and snorkeling, in my case. If you're an island resident, you're packaging up all of your supplies, you're going out to the islands for three or four days, and then you're coming back. You're not spending a whole eight hours or six hours or what have you, shopping in Wolfboro. It just isn't happening now. It's not to say that boats aren't coming in and loading up their supplies at Hunter's IGA or Harvest Market or getting a submarine sandwich at Hux Hogies or whatever. Of course, that's happening, all right? But they're not taking eight hours to do that. They're not taking six hours to do that. They're coming in and they're coming out. Now, are there the few, you know, scofflaws out there that want to take four hours and 10 minutes to do that? Yeah, there are, okay? But let's be reasonable. No one is going to write $100 boat violation, nor will I let my men write $100 boat violation for four hours and 10 minutes. It just isn't going to happen. It's bad. It's not the intent that the Board of Selectmen had in mind when they passed this ordinance. Now, if we start talking five and six hours, well, that's a little different, all right? We'll take action. But we don't see a lot of this. We just don't see it. Now, what we do see a lot of, and what we do take action on, are the overnight docking, you know, the one in the morning to the, to the 6:00 AM. That we do see a lot of, or people parking or dock, I say parking, but docking where they're not supposed to, or taking up the spaces for the island residents. So, the town has put spaces for the island residents. And the last thing is, if you're lucky enough to have a house on one of the islands and you come into Wolfboro to work because you're a worker at one of the, one of the shops or you're a shop owner or what have you, chances are, you probably own a slip somewhere. Or you're a member at one of the marinas and you're docking, could you in Hawkins, or you're docking at Back Bay down by Wolf Trap, you're not tying up a boat slip. Now, again, does, do we have onesies and twosies throughout the course of the year? Yeah, we do. And we take action when we find them. If there are specific violators, then I want to know about that because I'll have a talk with them. But this is not about, you know, not enforcing a town ordinance. We enforce the town ordinances. We do what we're told by the town manager, the Board of Selectmen, and more importantly, the police commission. What this is about is just an explosion of boaters on Lake Winnipesaukee. Like it or not, this is Wolfboro in 2017. This isn't Wolfboro in 1981 or 1982. And I've been out there in the middle of Wolfboro Bay trying to get in, and it's been a 35 or 45-minute wait, driving around in circles, trying to maneuver and cut the next guy off before he takes your, your boat slip, all right? I'm sorry, it's just the way it is, all right? And we just, we just got to deal with it. So, this is such an economic boon to the town. This is an absolute no-brainer. And what we're really talking about here is just a huge population expansion. It is a good thing to do to invest in our infrastructure, our roads, our bridges, our schools, our buildings, and yes, our town docks, because the economy is taking off. Right now, I think the stock market is at 12%, and I know it took a little nosedive today, but it's going to climb back up again. And when the economy really takes off and people start coming up here, we want to have the infrastructure in place to capture that. And this is, this is an excellent way to do that. Thank you very much.
Of course, of course.
Thank you. The other question was, and I don't know if this can be done through the town or through the state, or perhaps not done at all, but I know that the big boats kind of hog it all. And is there a way that you can designate an area for the larger boats, maybe because of the depth or something? You could, you know, do it that way? And then... way? And then an area that would be more suitable for the smaller boats? Because sometimes the big boats aren't too respectful of the smaller boats and we get pushed around. That would be a question to be asked. And then another question relevant to that is, when you move those, I'll call them pilings, are we going to be required to stay further away from them? You know, because now we've got a pretty good area to circle around. And we're still going to be circling around. 24 slips is not going to buy us the moon. So we're still going to be circling around. So are we going to have to per water rules, stay further away? Does Jim know the answer to that? And he mentioned that the wake area will be moved out, but I'm wondering what effect that will have. And then the last question is, when it was agreed for the mount to come in, I know we have a fee for the mount, and I think you may have just increased it a little bit, is, is who's going to pay for that other dock, the brand-new one? Last question is, can there be further expansion once we do this? Is that it? Thank you.
Thank you.
Steve Durgan, Goodewyn Hawkins Navy Yard, and I served on the Dock Expansion Committee. By way of just introducing the topics here and to answer the question about safety and so forth, there's a state rule that says that all boaters must slow down to no wake speed whenever they're 150 feet from just about everything. And no matter how far we put the docks out, they have to slow down to no wake speed, 150 feet from that. And, you know, we have a buoy out there now that's at 150 feet. And it's, it's not a law, it's just there so people know what 150 feet is. When you get out in the water, it's very difficult to ascertain what 150 feet is. I mean, some people know that it's half of a football field, you know, or across the football field, or, you know, a distance to throw a baseball or something of that nature. But it's difficult to ascertain, so we have that buoy out there. And we've talked in our committee of maybe moving that buoy out to 200 feet, so that it would give a margin of error for just exactly what you're saying, so that it would increase the safety there. And that, I think, would be a real good idea. On another vein, I get an opportunity to go to the town docks an awful lot, either as a part of a program we have called a Friendly Skipper, where we pick up people and take them on tours of the lake, or unfortunately, sometimes when people are broken down at the town docks and they need assistance and we go over there. Our workboat has rubber sides, which is a good thing because you can't get into the town docks. You have to pull up next to the boat that you're going to work on, that you're going to help, and, you know, try to give them some assistance. So I have firsthand knowledge for many, many years, about 30, going in and out of the town docks and seeing exactly what the chief just mentioned, the explosion of boats on Lake Winnipesaukee. And I really find that whenever I go over there, people are pretty respectful. I mean, I think boaters are among the most respectful people in our society. They have to be in order to get along. I mean, there's no double yellow lines out there. There are no traffic signals or anything. So you just have to know the right of way and the rules of the road. Getting in and out of the town docks is not an easy thing, that's for sure. You have to be a good boat operator, because otherwise you're going to damage yourself and other people's boats. Thankfully, there's not that much of that. And I'm sure that the chief has records and Marine Patrol have records as to how many, you know, personal injuries, which I've never seen one down there due to a boating accident, and even property damage. So I don't think that's a real problem. But it is a problem of frustration that people have, that they can't get into the town docks in Wolfboro. I'd like you to keep something in mind. The last statistics I saw said that there were 64,000 boats on Lake Winnipesaukee. 64,000. There's one marina in the town of Wolfboro, and there's one yacht club in the town of Wolfboro. But there were 36 marinas around the lake. That tells you, most of the boats are over there. And I'll tell you, a high percentage of them want to come over here. And the reason why is that I'm highly biased, but Wolfboro is the most beautiful bay to come into. Everybody who owns a boat would love to come to Wolfboro. And they want to come to Wolfboro to give us their money. But if they can't get a dock, they circle around for a while and they say, hmm, we'll go to Alton Bay. So our committee took a trip around to every one of the town docks. We really prepared for this, this hearing. And we wanted to see what the other town docks were like, and if there was any kind of a correlation between towns that do well and towns that don't. And you know, the towns that have the best town docks for the most number of boats are Wolfboro, Laconia at Weas Beach, and Meredith. And those towns really take advantage of the boater traffic. And I think it's time that Wolfboro did exactly the same thing. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I would just like to conclude that the questions I ask aren't meant to be negative there to get an understanding, because I am in support of it. I do boat, and I am supportive of it. And I know how frustrating it is not to be able to get in after circling and circling and circling. So I hope they weren't taken in a negative light. They're not meant to be. But I would just, I would just again ask if, if it's legal to have spaces for small boats. I don't know if you can segregate them or not, but...
Thank you.
So I'm here on behalf of Deb Skelly, who couldn't be here tonight. But knowing, I'm from Bailey's Bubble, and I just actually ran up the hill to be here. We were a little busy, so I had to wait a little bit. But Deb's perspective is that this is going to bring so much business to this community. And I'll tell you a story. Yesterday, a family from Meredith came over here just to try blueberry pie ice cream. They drove all the way across the entire lake to get blueberry pie ice cream. And so the extra dock spots add so much to our economy. And they provide, like, Bailey's Bubble provides so many jobs for youth in the neighborhood, including dockside. And so extra dock slips, I know it's so, and no, it's not the hugest deal, but it's, it's so important to our economy because it provides extra, extra people coming all the way across the lake for blueberry pie ice cream. So on behalf of Deb and Bailey's Bubble, we, it's positive. I'm Brendan O'Neil, by the way. Thank you.
I don't know what his name was.
Any other members of the public that wish to speak?
Luke, I'll speak when...
Okay, so I'll close the public portion. Board members?
I'm Dave Bowers, and I'm the, probably the only residential abutter to the docks. And I've been for a quarter of a century watching the docks. And I have a couple of comments. First of all, at any given time, as dock watchers know, when the docks are full, there are usually two or three openings inside that no one can see from the water. And a number of years ago, I proposed that, that hire a high school student to be a watchman at the dock to say, hey, there's a space over here, a space over here. That would do it. That would really increase turnover. It would also help Dean Rondo and the police if someone stayed there more than, say, five hours or whatever little grace period would be. Secondly, if there's a Carver yacht or something very large out toward the front of the dock, then people are afraid to go behind and there are even more spaces back there. And third, I'm, as an abutter, a number of years ago, might, you might put this on the agenda, Matt, or Plenud, Planning Director. The town dock on the right-hand side intrudes on our, touches our property, and I own the property, but if some future owner of the property might say, remove it. What happened is about 25 years ago, I gave the town permission to build a dock there, extending into our property in return for taking the chain link fence between the two properties and having the town maintain it. This is not in writing. So Matt, you might want to put that in writing and maybe have a hearing on it in case anyone objects, just so that some future owner, the future owner of our property, because I'm not going to live forever, doesn't say, hey, remove that dock. But the town docks are very dynamic. I haven't, I've seen a lot of people jockeying for positions, and I've seen some arguments and things, but not too many. Most people are very peaceful. I think the main thing is people just don't quite know what docks are available, or if someone's hovering on the one side and there's a space on the other. So maybe, maybe the chamber, somebody could hire a dock monitor, like they say, a high school kid or something, just to help move traffic. And you'd probably increase the turnover, I'm guessing, by 20% because people do need help.
Thanks, Steve.
As Steve said, we did take, what, four of us, I think, on the committee, and we went around to all the different towns and looked at their docks. We were quite impressed with a couple of them. But we decided to go ahead with the extension of these docks. And as was said earlier, we met with Rennie Pelletier and Dailene Force down in Concord. Got a very good review from them. About Washington people were very glad to see that they wanted to change their objection on coming into the dock. They were very pleased with it. The Winnie Bell, they were fine with it. Again, nothing will change where the museum boat is. But we felt that we could get this through. And what we may look at this year is the possibility of a warrant article with a capital reserve fund, so that some of it would be put together this year, and then the project would not be done probably till 2019, would be the year that we'll project that this project will, will take place. So that's kind of the timeframe, if you will, of this project. So don't think it's going to be in a warrant this year to be done next summer. That's, we don't think that's going to happen. We want to phase it in in two phases. I think that's what we've talked about in the past, so that it won't be done till 2019. As mentioned, the ramp will be done this fall. That will be done because of the ongoing work that's going to be done in that parking lot this fall. So that'll be done at the same time. So that will be done, but it will not be part of this project because that's already funded for this fall.
Well, I'm 100% behind this project. And I look at the work that the community as a whole has done. The people and the businesses that took part of the business retention and expansion, who pointed this out, the EDC for supporting it, the Board of Selectmen for having an ad hoc committee that took in members from different town committees and came and worked together to provide you with the plan you see today. I think it makes sense. I went with Steve Durgan and Dave Senical to look at the other towns. And I go down periodically to the town docks. And the other day, I saw 13 boats doing their circle around. We need them in on our docks. We need them shopping in our community. And I think this is a win for all of us.
Yeah, I completely agree with everything that's been said here. I really liked, drawing out some notes here, and it was all very positive support from everybody that spoke tonight. And one thing I just want to mention, I mentioned this before too, the town of Wolfboro is also kind of pretty unique here, because if you look at these other towns that we've compared to with Laconia and Meredith having the other larger dock systems, we're the only town that actually has a downtown right down by the waterfront. Those other towns, I mean, at the Weas, you have the arcade area there and stuff. And in Meredith, you have the restaurants, stuff like that. But their downtowns actually have the street up on the hill there. So we're very unique in that way, that these people are coming in and they're able to hit all of our shops, you know, for all the businesses in town, you know, that are in the chamber and the EDC and stuff like that. It's a very unique, you know, town in that regard. So I think this would be a great project. I'm glad everybody sounds like they're behind it. I know from everything we've heard here, the Board of Selectmen is definitely behind it. So, you know, we just urge everybody's support for this to continue.
Thank you, Brad. I just wanted to say too, that I am in complete support of this. You know, I wanted to start off by thanking the members of the Dock Committee that looked at this. They spent a lot of time looking at other towns and coming up with this plan. And this will bring, you know, it'll bring more people into Wolfboro. As a boater, I know that if you're trying to get in on a Saturday or Sunday in June, July, or August, you can be waiting 30, 35 minutes. And it is, we want those people in our town. We want them, you know, at our restaurants. And the town docks really are their access point, because other than that, there's very little parking in town that's public. So I completely support this. And I thank the members of the public for coming out tonight and voicing their concerns. There was a lot of good comments and some things that we can certainly look at moving forward to put into the plans.
I'd be happy to make a motion.
I might just ask them if they have anything to just stop us and talk to us any time.
Yeah, obviously, any members of the public or people that are watching this on TV, you know, this is, this is a work in progress. So, you know, stop us if you see us. Ask us questions. Ask members of the Dock Committee, you know, reach out to the town manager. Because, you know, this is reinvigorating, this downtown area and dockside, you know, is a process that's going to continue over the next couple of years. And we look forward to input. And, you know, I just wanted to thank everybody for coming out here. Are there any, Mr. Bowers?
Make motion?
Sure.
I move that the Board of Selectmen endorse the Bite Mountain Survey and Engineering Proposal as presented tonight for the expansion of the town docks.
I'll second that.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion from the board?
I've got a question. This is just to give a general support. We're going to see it as through the CIP and then into a warrant article. But this motion is just to give the support today?
Argue? Just to support the project.
Just support?
Yes.
Okay. I just want to make sure.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you. Motion to adjourn?
I make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed?